Okay, good evening, everybody. It's six oh one P M on the seventeenth of April twenty twenty five. I'm Mike Capuano, I'm the chairman of the planning board. This is the April seventeenth meeting of the planning board with me tonight is our vice chair Amelia Aboff, our clerk Jahan Habib. Our members Luke Schuster, Michael McNeely, and I know Lynn Richards is here and I know she is having issues with her tech, Lynn is with us. Uh, we have a quorum. Uh, pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty five, this meeting of the planning board is conducted via remote participation. Video recording the proceedings is available on the city's website. Um, specifically the meetings at events page. Um, where you can also get it by emailing planningboard@summervillema.gov. This meeting uh is being recorded. Um, our next scheduled meetings is May first. Quick announcement, we have an open seat. So if you're interested in joining the planning board, um, please submit your uh interest resume cover letter to planningboard@summervillema.gov. We are meeting as the planning board right now until six thirty. Uh, for members of the public, when we will recess this meeting of the planning board, we will reconvene uh with a new link and a different link for a joint hearing with the land use committee of the city council. And at the conclusion of that joint hearing, we will reconvene as the planning board our uh on our own agenda after the land use committee has concluded. So when we recess this meeting, we will have a little sign up saying we're recessed, but if you need to reconvene following the land use committee, presumably we don't get to all of our business tonight, um, or at least before six thirty, then um then we'll reconvene, okay? So in the interest of getting what we can done at least before six thirty, we have meeting minutes for March sixth. Has everybody had a chance to look at the draft meeting minutes for March sixth? Does anybody have any comments, questions, or revisions? Okay. Seeing none, the chair moves to adopt the March sixth draft minutes as the minutes of the planning board seconded by Amelia. Steve, can we have a roll call?
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Okay, uh, March twentieth draft meeting minutes. Anybody have any suggested revisions to those? And seeing none, the chair moves to adopt the draft meeting minutes of March twentieth as the minutes of the minutes of the planning board, seconded by Amelia. Steve, roll call, please.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye, we have meeting minutes for the twentieth. Up next, we've got thirty-three Mystic Avenue. Uh, this case was opened. It was presented. We took testimony both uh oral and written. All public testimony on this agenda item has closed. So it is now up to the planning board for discussion with the applicant and with staff and consideration for potential votes um on on this application this evening. So if I could please have the applicant and the applicant's um team representatives be unmuted, shared, whatever they need to do, and we can have a chat about Mr. Gavin.
Sure, this is Steve Carey. I'm promoting Pablo Picker and Paul Miller, two panelists.
And can the board hear me?
Yes.
Um, great. Good evening. Uh, well, I got a busy night tonight, so we'll jump right in. Um, my name's Pablo Picker. I'm the owner of Thirty-three Mystic Ave, also leading the um development team for this, and we are excited to be here again. Um, we will jump right in, so coming out of last, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mr. Picker, have any updates since uh since last meeting?
Uh, yes, so we wanted to from last meeting, uh, what came out of that meeting, um, the the time that we had was um member Richards had asked uh our team to talk about the mitigations that we would have um in the building for future uh residents. Um, and so we spent the last two weeks um reviewing that as a team, and Paul Miller has some slides to share. Um, and we can start there and of course happy to answer any other questions that the board might have, so I will pass that off to Paul.
Thanks, Pablo. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Uh, it says sharing is not turned on.
This is Steve Carey. Let me uh give you, there you go. Okay, you should have ability now.
Yep, that worked. Thanks, Steve. Okay. So um so this project is going to be required by uh the specialized energy code to meet passive house standards. Um, and that, you know, to meet that standard, it needs to have triple-gate glazed windows. It needs to have uh continuous unbroken air barrier for complete air tightness. Um, it's also going to be required to have energy recovery ventilators, um, which we we spoke to our M E P engineer about um the MERV sixteen filtration, uh, which Wig mentioned on the meeting a couple of weeks ago as being the standard that's required to to filter the ultrafine particulate matter um that you tend to see around highways. Um, and so we we talked to our M E P engineer and confirmed that will be um possible for us to do with the E R V system that we have planned for the project. So we're confident that in inside the building, we will have clean air. Um, you know, a combination of that airtight envelope and then this energy recovery ventilator and filtration system. Um, and so, you know, happy to answer any more specific questions than that, but again, we feel we feel confident about the building design. And that's the only new slide that we had to present um we have for tonight.
Thank you. Um, do we have any comments or questions or discussion items by members of planning board? Um, or of staff? Who we so yeah, Lynn, this was, I think, your response to um a question you had. So yeah, absolutely.
Yep, Paul, I really appreciate you um and you you uh daylighting that information. Um, perhaps it was already embedded in your project. Um, but the the kind of three, three different options, I think, is the absolute best that you can do i- in in this. Now, of course, there's always going to be issues when somebody leaves the house, but that um that's not anything that you can control or that we can control. So I I feel confident um that you've addressed my concern, and I really appreciate the the very simple nature and understandable. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Great. Okay, um good, I'll just say as as one member, I thought the uh application, the presentation was very, very good. Uh, I think this is a really nice um project that that you've presented to to us. And I'm looking forward to um seeing if we can move forward with it this evening. So this is, yeah, so this is one of those items that require a number of votes. So we're gonna have to take, I think, five separate votes. Um so in order to do what we need to do, I will just go down the line. Uh, this is for the site plan approval. Uh, following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberation of the required considerations outlined by the zoning ordinance, and move to approve with the conditions laid out in the staff memorandum, the site plan approval to develop a six-story general building in the Assembly Square Mixed Use District. Seconded by Amelia, Steve, roll call this.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberations of the required considerations outlined by the ordinance, I move to approve with the conditions outlined in the staff memo dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. A special permit for a waiver from the lot area dimensional standard in the Assembly Square Mixed Use District, seconded by Amelia. Steve, go.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberations of the required considerations outlined by the zoning ordinance, and move to approve with the conditions laid out in the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five staff memo. The special permit for a waiver from the floor area ratio dimensional standard in the Assembly Square Mixed Use District, seconded by Amelia. Steve.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberations of the required considerations outlined by the zoning ordinance, I move to approve with the conditions in the staff memorandum, the special permit for a waiver from the building height dimensional standard, the Assembly Square Mixed Use District with the recommended conditions in that staff memorandum, seconded by Amelia. Roll call, please.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberations of the required considerations outlined by the ordinance, I move to approve with the conditions in the Feb. twenty eighth, twenty twenty five staff memorandum, a special permit for a waiver from the lot area per dwelling unit dimensional standard in the Assembly Square Mixed Use District with the recommended conditions in that memorandum, seconded by Amelia. Roll call, please.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Those are all the votes that we need to take on your project. Uh, congratulations. Good luck.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, board. If I may quickly, I just want to thank the city and the staff as well, and Andrew Graminsky, who worked with us on this for the last year and a half, um, Sarah Lewis. And I know you guys are working on the adoption of the the master plan for Assembly, so we are very excited to to be a part of that and look forward to the next steps. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Um, we look forward to having you as partners as well.
Thanks, everybody.
Maybe it's the speed uh with which we were getting through this, or maybe it's the accent, but Zoom just asked me to confirm my uh my speaking language. It's English.
Coming in all clear over here.
I've never seen that one before. Um, wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. It is six fourteen, which means we have sixteen minutes between now and uh convening with the land use committee for a joint hearing. We have one other agenda item outside of the joint hearing on our agenda. Uh, it's an application that's already been opened and has been continued a couple of times. It is at three seventy-five Harold Cohen Way. What I'd like to know is if the applicant or the applicant's representative can be unmuted um and just kind of let me know what um how much time you think you're going to need for a kind of a wholesome presentation here, because we're working on a fifteen-minute timetable, and I don't want to rush you more than I have to. Um but if you think you can get at least a presentation in within the next fifteen minutes, we'd we'd love to see it and then uh kind of take things up. You know, after the land use committee, but if you think you need more than fifteen minutes for a presentation, um, one, you haven't worked with me before, uh, and 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 two, we may um recess early and and take you up perhaps after the land use committee. Um, but let's let's at least get an idea of what we're looking at.
This is Steve Carey. I did promote uh Amy Houghton. Um, I also see Sarah Rogers. They'll promote panelists and Matt Snell.
Hello?
You're muted, Sarah.
Is the applicant team um able to present, Steve, if they need it?
Believe so. Um.
We have a couple other people to promote, I believe.
Okay, I see Peter Mara. Is he part of your team?
Yes.
Okay, great.
There, it's a button down in the corner. And uh uh Kristen as well. Did she raise her hand?
Uh, Kristen McDougall?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
So this is a, this is Matt Snell. I think that Sarah Rogers is having um a little technical difficulty there. Um, we do have a presentation. It may be a little tiny bit longer than fifteen minutes. Um.
Yeah, we'll we'll look at 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 more like twelve or thirteen minutes at this point. Um so tell, so here he he is where I'm at. Um I'd love to be able to get the presentation. I I I feel like it would be a disservice to you and your team if we cut you kind of in the middle of talking um and and presenting just to come back with somebody giving a a kind of the tail end of what was probably otherwise a very good presentation. Um generally, the planning board doesn't take up new agenda items, and by new, I mean new things that were actually being presented uh and discussing after nine o'clock. I am of the impression that the land use committee meeting tonight is not going to take uh quite so long. Um, such that we would be taking you after nine P M. I really, really hope not. Um, you know, that is sometimes the case. What I what I'd like to offer is is this. Um if you have a portion of the presentation you'd like to start now and perhaps conclude later, we can do that. If you think it makes most sense for the cohesiveness of your presentation, um, again, I want to be respectful of of everybody's, you know, time and and work here. Um maybe we can continue you until after the land use committee um joint hearing has concluded so that you can have kind of an uninterrupted presentation. Um you 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 tell me what you think works best for for your team.
So, you know, my initial thought is we have two pieces to the project, right? We're asking for two two pieces of relief as we have before. We have the the major amendment to the P U D, which is simply to adopt new design guidelines for for the block, and then we have the special permit. We could present the design guidelines portion um and kind of lay that out, and then that's probably a good stopping point. And then we can really get into the full design of the building and 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 the special permit hearing after.
Let's let's do that, then. If that if that's how you think you want to proceed, we have ten minutes. Um, you think you can get that portion of the presentation done in ten minutes?
If we can't get it done in seven minutes, then we're too long.
Okay, I I you and I will work well. All right, go for it.
So Kristen, you can share your screen?
Yep, I will go ahead and do that. Okay, and let's start the presentation. Can you all see my presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. So, yeah, go ahead, Matt.
So, and just to introduce myself, I've been talking this long. I'm Matt Snell from Nutter McLennan and Fish, um permitting counsel for for the matter. Um, just a a super quick overview, as I just said, we have two pieces of this, um, like all the blocks that you've seen before. Um, the P U D um generally requires that we submit design guidelines for each block as we go along. Um, condition thirty-nine point two of the P U D. It doesn't specifically require it for block nine like it does for some other um some other blocks in the in the larger project, but as you know, this is one of the later blocks in the project, and the design guidelines are from probably two thousand and six. Um, it makes sense to update them to what we're doing, um, like we just did for block seven A um two years ago and and so forth. So um, we have that P U D amendment, and then we'll we'll do the special permit site plan project. So you can flip forward.
And if Sarah is having trouble.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Perfect timing.
Okay, um, so I'm Sarah Rogers, Development Manager with Federal Realty on this block nine project, joined tonight by Kristen McDougal, um, who is our project manager for the architecture firm, DeMilla Schaefer. We also have Amy with Wagner Hodgson and a number of folks tonight from V H B. Peter Mara is on to present, and you have met Matt Snell with Nutter. So with that, I think we'll just jump right into it. This is um a site plan to give you some context in terms of where block nine is located. It is the donut-shaped building highlighted in purple. It is Federal Realty's first new development project west of Grand Union Boulevard. Um, in terms of some additional context, building twenty-three on here, plan right is the Revolution Residential Building, and plan south, block twenty-one A, is Biomed's recently completed lab building. Um, to the left of our building on plan, blocks twelve through nineteen, just to clear up any potential confusion, is the existing location of the Assembly Marketplace building and the surface parking lot. What you see here is Federal Realty's riff on the city's neighborhood plan and master plan, just to try to put the building into a broader context in terms of the future of this part of the neighborhood.
Thanks, Sarah. So, uh, good evening. It's good to be with you. Um, and as Matt said, we wanted to update the design guidelines since now this is being developed as a multifamily housing rather than um a commercial building. So here are our five design guidelines. The first one is that the main entrance should be located on Harold Cohen Way to support the city's long-term vision for the neighborhood. So that might not be um intuitive. Uh, we originally had our main entrance on Grand Union Boulevard, but um listen to the city who really envisions Harold Cohen Way as this uh pedestrian-oriented street, kind of similar to Assemblary Row, and they see Grand Union as more of a vehicular street. So uh, that's our first design guideline. The second is that uh secondary entrance for convenience be located on the other side of the building closer to the uh T Station, which is up here, and also to the existing bus stop. Number three, active storefronts should be on the ground level, uh, located on Foley Street and wrapping the corners to activate the street wall facades. Uh, designated significant corners uh should exhibit differentiation of materials and character responding to the natural hub at the corner of Foley Street and Grand Union here, where there's a lot of visibility and car traffic, and also a second significant corner uh back at the corner of Harold Cohen Way and Auto Workers' Way, uh, which is going to be across from the planned future park. Finally, uh, vehicle ingress and egress for parking and access for service and loading should be located along Auto Workers' Way. This is the same function that uh Alta Revolution has right across the street, so our trash will be um across the street from their trash, and we're matching their use. So that's uh, that concludes our design guidelines update. Hopefully that was uh in ten minutes. And uh, I'll I'll stop my sharing. Are there any questions?
That was well presented in about five and a half minutes, so I I give you props.
Mr. Chair, I I would add one thing, if I may, just not to belabor it, but we did review this with the U D C. Um, they made comments on this along with the design of the project, which been taken into account in the design and so forth. So it's kind of the same process that we followed for block eight and block seven, so.
I appreciate that. Um, I'm I'm gonna reserve, just so everybody knows, I'm gonna reserve public testimony until after the conclusion of the entirety of of your presentation. But if there's anything in the next, you know, three and a half minutes that members of the planning board have any comments or questions on of the applicant or the staff for this portion of the presentation, um let's let's see what you have to say. Otherwise, we can put ourselves in recess and reconvene in a bit. Okay, seeing no immediate discussion by members of the board, um I would like to it wouldn't be a continuation. It would just be putting putting the project um in in recess to reconvene after the land use committee. So at six twenty-seven P M, the chair moves for recess, um pending the uh conclusion of the joint hearing with the land use committees, seconded by Amelia, Steve, roll call, please.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye, the planning board is in recess until we're able to reconvene after the joint hearing. Thank you, everybody. See you soon.
Thank you.
Waiting on Amelia and Steve, do we have you back on this link?
Yes, I am back. I had to go to a different computer, but I'm back now.
Just waiting on you. Steve, I think the planning board has not stopped recording, so you don't have to do anything to bring us back, right?
That's right. It's been recording.
Okay, wonderful. At seven forty-four PM, the planning board is back in session following our joint hearing with Land Use Committee. For the purpose of a quorum, I am Mike Capuano, I'm the chairman of the planning board. We have our vice chair Amelia Abov, we have our clerk Jahan Habib, we have our members Lynn Richards, Michael McNeely, and Luke Schuster. We have a quorum to continue our hearing on Harold Cohen Way. And as a reminder for everybody who might be in the audience, we had the beginning of a presentation by the applicant on one portion of their application. And we were playing it by ear on when we were going to get out of the joint hearing. It's only seven forty-five, so we've got plenty of time to hear the rest of their presentation and take some testimony and maybe ask some questions and engagements and discussions. So if the applicant and team, if they're not already unmuted and have the ability to share their screen as needed, can we get that done? And can the team also please reintroduce themselves for the purpose of our record?
Sure. Hi, Kristen McDougall with Demolisher Project Architect.
Sarah Rogers with Federal Realty Owner Developer.
Amy Houghton with Wagner Hodgson Landscape Architect, I'm the landscape architect on the project.
Yedemara, I'm civil engineer with PHP.
And Matt's now with Nutter McConan and Fish. So Kristen, I think you can share the presentation where we left off.
Thank you all.
All right, can everyone see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
All right, so now we'll start with the SPSRA portion. We'll do a brief introduction, then look at the building design, follow that with the discussion of the public realm, and finally answer any questions you might have. Now I'll turn it over to Matt to explain the zoning relief requested.
Thanks, Kristen. Really quickly, I think that we all understand that Block Nine is the next phase of the Assembly PUD, which was initially approved in 2006 and subsequently amended a number of times over the years. What we're looking for tonight is a special permit with site plan approval, as the board probably calls. The new zoning enacted in 2019 includes language that allows a previously approved PUD such as Assembly Row to actually move forward under the former zoning, so the zoning that was in effect in August of 2019. So the special permit we asked for is a little different than what you're seeing on new projects. It's actually under the old zoning and pursuant to the standards that were in place as of 2019. The purpose of that is just to kind of have the continuation of and the benefit of the zoning that the PUD was approved under. As part of the older zoning, the 2019 zoning, the planning board has the authority to waive certain development requirements in the Assembly Square District. And so tonight, as part of the special permit, we're also asking for five waivers to reduce the minimum one-way maneuvering aisle, we'll talk about that. Waive the requirement for an updated traffic study, waive the submission of a 3D scale model, reduce the minimum parking requirement from three hundred and forty-nine spaces to one hundred and forty-nine spaces, and waive the right of first refusal. These are, you know, most of these are typical things that we've asked for for other projects, you know, based on the long term. The project's seen traffic study a whole bunch of times and, you know, the 3D scale and those things aren't truly necessary at this stage. This project's been looked at a lot over the years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah and we'll get into the nitty gritty.
Thanks, Matt. So I just quickly wanted to give the planning board an overview in terms of what the project is. Block Nine is a three hundred and eighteen unit mixed-income residential building with ground floor retail, residential amenities, and back-of-house space. The second floor is the parking level with residential units on floors three through eight, so it's an eight-story structure. It will be passive house, all-electric, and designed to lead gold. On the second half of this page, you can see in the left column what we're proposing and on the right column is what we are required to achieve. We are complying with the affordable housing requirement and have one hundred and fifty bike parking spaces, we're required to have one hundred and eleven. Our LEED requirement is just to be LEED certifiable, so we are more than achieving that. The one place where we are seeking a waiver is the number of vehicle parking spaces where we are required to have three hundred and forty-nine and we're seeking a waiver for that to be reduced to one forty-nine. On the ground floor retail, we are targeting a daycare user along Foley Street. TBD if we're able to secure one, but you might see that throughout the presentation, so I thought I'd mention it, that that is a goal. We think that would be a great user for the neighborhood. And the building height is eighty-five feet. With that, I will turn it over to Kristen to talk through the building design.
Thanks, Sarah. So here is an aerial view of the neighborhood, just to give you some site context for our building. You can see that the neighborhood includes numerous buildings that measure over two hundred feet, notably the Biomed Building just to the south of us, which is two hundred and twenty-five feet. Block Nine will be eighty-five feet, which is the same as the Revolution Alta multifamily directly to the south. As discussed earlier, there is significant car travel and visibility along Grand Union Boulevard and Foley Street, creating a natural hub at the northeast corner of the site. And we're also planning for a second significant corner across from the future planned park where there is the most ample sun exposure.
Waiting on Amelia and. Steve, do we have you back on this link?
Yes, yes, I am back. I had to go to a different computer, but I'm back now.
Just waiting on. Steve, I think the planning board has not stopped recording, so you don't have to do anything to bring us back, right?
That's right. It's been recording.
Okay, wonderful. At seven forty-four P M, the planning board is back in session following our joint hearing with Land Use Committee. For the purpose of a quorum, I am Mike Capuano, I'm the chairman of the planning board. We have our vice chair Amelia Aboff. We have our clerk Jahan Habib. We have our members Lynn Richards, Michael McNeely, and Luke Schuster. We have a quorum to continue our hearing on Harold Cohen Way. And as a reminder for everybody who might be in the audience, we had the beginning of a presentation by the applicant on one portion of their application. And we were playing it by ear on when we were going to get out of the joint hearing. It's only seven forty-five, so we've got plenty of time to hear the rest of their presentation and take some testimony and maybe ask some questions and engagements and discussions. So if the applicant and team, if they're not already unmuted and have the ability to share their screen as needed, can we get that done? And can the team also please reintroduce themselves for the purpose of our record?
Sure. Hi, Kristen McDougall with the Miller Shaffer Project Architect.
Sarah Rogers with Federal Realty Owner Developer.
Amy Houghton with Wagner Hodgson Landscape Architect on the landscape architect on the project.
Peter Mara, I'm civil engineer with PHP.
And Matt's now with Nutter McConan and Fish. So Kristen, I think you can share the presentation where we left off.
Yes, thank you all.
All right, can everyone see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
All right, so now we'll start with the S P S R A portion. We'll do a brief introduction, then look at the building design, follow that with the discussion of the public realm, and finally answer any questions you might have. Now I'll turn it over to Matt to explain the zoning relief requested.
Okay, thanks, Kristen. Really quickly, I think that we all understand that Block Nine is the next phase of the the Assembly P U D, which was initially approved in two thousand and six and subsequently amended a number of times over the years. What we're looking for tonight is a special permit with site plan approval. As the board probably calls, the new zoning enacted in two thousand and nineteen includes language that allows a previously approved P U D such as Assembly Row to actually move forward under the former zoning, so the zoning that was in effect in August of two thousand and nineteen. So the special permit we asked for is a little different than what you're seeing on new projects. It's actually under the old zoning and pursuant to the standards that were in place as of two thousand and nineteen. The purpose of that is just to kind of have the continuation of and the benefit of the zoning that the P U D was approved under. As part of the older zoning, the two thousand and nineteen zoning, the planning board has the authority to waive certain development requirements in the Assembly Square District. And so tonight, as part of the special permit, we're also asking for five waivers to reduce the minimum one-way maneuvering aisle. We'll talk about that. Waive the requirement for an updated traffic study, waive the submission of a three D scale model, reduce the minimum parking requirement from three hundred and forty-nine spaces to one hundred and forty-nine spaces, and waive the right of first refusal. These are, you know, most of these are typical things that we've asked for for other projects. You know, based on the long term, the project's seen traffic study a whole bunch of times and you know, the three D scale and those things aren't truly necessary at this stage. This project's been looked at a lot over the years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah and we'll get into the nitty gritty.
Thanks, Matt. So I just quickly wanted to give the planning board an overview in terms of what the project is. Block nine is a three hundred and eighteen unit mixed income residential building with ground floor retail, residential amenities and back of house space. The second floor is the parking level with residential units on floors three through eight. So it's an eight-story structure. It will be passive house, all electric and designed to lead gold. On the second half of this page, you can see in the left column what we're proposing and on the right column is what we are what we are required to achieve. We are complying with the affordable housing requirement and have one hundred and fifty bike parking spaces. We're required to have one hundred and eleven. Our lead requirement is just to be LEED certifiable, so we are more than achieving that. The one place where we are seeking a waiver is the number of vehicle parking spaces where we are required to have three hundred and forty-nine and we're seeking a waiver for that to be reduced to one forty-nine. On the ground floor retail, we are targeting a daycare user along Foley Street. TBD if we're able to secure one, but you might see that throughout the presentation, so I thought I'd mention it that that is a goal. We think that would be a great user for the neighborhood. And the building height is eighty-five feet. With that, I will turn it over to Kristen to talk through the building design.
Thanks, Sarah. So here is an aerial view of the neighborhood, just to give you some site context for our building. You can see that the neighborhood includes numerous buildings that measure over two hundred feet. Notably, the Biomed Building just to the south of us, which is two hundred and twenty-five feet. Block nine will be eighty-five feet, which is the same as the Revolution Alta multifamily directly to the south. As discussed earlier, there is significant car travel and visibility along Grand Union Boulevard and Foley Street, creating a natural hub at the northeast corner of the site. And we're also planning for a second significant corner across from the future planned park where there is the most ample sun exposure. Our design highlights those significant corners, creating contextual harmony with other buildings in Assembly Row that have taken the same approach. These corners are delineated by recessed notches on each side that provide relief to the facade. Programmatically, as Sarah explained, we have the retail and residential amenity on the first floor, resident parking on the second floor, and then on floors three through eight, we have residential units with a courtyard on the third floor. Here you can see our ground floor plan, which follows the design guidelines laid out earlier. We have the retail area on Foley Street, which wraps around the corners and the dedicated outdoor retail area. Then along Harold Cohen Way, we have the main entrance, the lobby and amenities animating the street and turning the corner. Along Auto Workers Way, we have the back of house functions and turning the corner. Finally, on Grand Union Boulevard, we have the bus stop and the secondary entrance. Parking starts on level one and also goes up the ramp to level two. Here you can see the continuation of the ramp and then there is one-way traffic going around in a loop. We also have some additional back of house space in gray and vertical transportation lobbies, so stair and elevator lobbies in green. On level three, we have our residential units in blue along with our courtyard and additional residential amenities. And then the balance of the building, levels four through eight, is dedicated to residential units. So now I'll go through some renderings for the building, kind of walk around the building. This first one is the first significant corner at Grand Union and Foley Street. You can see the retail space on the ground level and glazing that is carried up to level three at the corner. The secondary entrance is visible about midway down the block on Grand Union Boulevard. So if we turn the corner around to Foley Street, here is the Foley Street and Harold Cohen corner. You can see the retail wraps around and we have a double-height dedicated outdoor space, hopefully for daycare, if not probably outdoor dining. As you go down Harold Cohen, you can see the main entrance of the building. And then at the end of Harold Cohen, you can see the future park and a connection to the amenities club room that we have planned for this corner. Entrances to the loading dock, trash and recycling and parking are further down Auto Workers Way. Finally, here at the last corner, you can see a painted mural that animates the Transformer alcove and wraps the corner. This is just an example of what the mural could be. We plan to engage with the local artist for the design. And then beyond that, we are back to the secondary entrance on Grand Union. Now I'll just show you the elevations of each of the four facades. It's another view of what we've already talked about, so I'll go through pretty quickly. This is Grand Union Boulevard. Foley Street. Harold Cohen with the main entrance. And Auto Workers Way. In terms of materiality, the pattern of the materials relates back to the massing of our significant corners. So the intent is to vary the material texture of our primary cladding material, which is cementitious panels. In order to enrich the facade, we have three different kinds, actually four. So over here at the at the significant corners, we've got ribbed cementitious panels. That's number one. Number two, we've got lap cementitious siding here at the recess notch. Number three, we've got flat cementitious panels at what I will, for lack of a better word, call our checkerboard area of the facade. We have numbers four and five are metal panel and wood pattern siding accents at our entries. And finally, we have formed metal panel at the parking areas and service areas to which we will apply the artistic graphic at the Transformer alcove, helping to animate the length of the facade. Zooming into the materiality at the street level, you can see we have curtain wall at the entries and amenity areas. We have the formed metal panel above the curtain wall, also with louvers. We have again the metal the metal panel and wood pattern siding accents at the entrances. And then there's a stone base along most of the facade. You can also see here we have some raised planters and benches that the rest of the team will get into next as they discuss the public realm. So Peter, with that, I will turn it over to you.
Awesome. Again, I'm Peter Mara with V H P. I'm civil engineer for the project. I'm here to discuss the city coordination efforts and the existing proposed streetscape for Block Nine. During the special permit with cycling review process, we have met with several city departments, including mobility, engineering and public space and urban forestry. We've been actively coordinating streetscape comments received from these departments during the review process. And the project team is committed to continue to coordinate with the city to advance its streetscape design. And we plan to respond to and address each comment during future permitting processes, including the tree removal permit, streetscape construction permit and building permits. Go to the next slide, please, Kristen. Thanks. On this slide, I'll be discussing existing streetscape. This slide shows an existing aerial of the site on the left and on the right are four images of the four intersections surrounding the site. Starting in a clockwise direction with Grand Union Boulevard located on the east side of the site. The street acts as the main vehicular thoroughfare for Assembly Row. There is an existing M B T bus stop, sidewalks and some landscaping. The project proposes to maintain the bus stop and provide improved sidewalks and landscape along the street. Within the street, there are protected painted bicycle lanes, as you can see in photos number one and number four. We are proposing to maintain these painted bike lanes. So south of the project site is Auto Workers Way. This street is used primarily for loading and vehicular garage access for the Alter Revolution Building, which is directly south of our site. And Block Nine will also be using it for its loading and garage access, as Kristen previously mentioned. There are, there is an existing temporary sidewalk on the Block Nine side of the street, which the project poses to replace with an improved sidewalk connection. West of the site is Harold Cohen Way. This is the main pedestrian street that connects Block Nine to Biomed's Assembly Innovation Park Development, located west of the site and Alter Revolution to the south, as shown in photo number three. There is a raised street starting at the intersection of Harold Cohen Way and Auto Workers Way that continues south towards Revolution Drive. On the Block Nine side, there is an existing temporary sidewalk that will be replaced with the project. And finally, on the north side of the project is Foley Street. This is the other main vehicular thoroughfare connecting Middlesex Avenue to Grand Union Boulevard. This street has sidewalk connections to both Assembly Innovation Park and Assembly Row. There is a separated bicycle path alongside Assembly Innovation Park, as shown in photo number two. Currently alongside Block Nine, there is a protected painted bicycle path that will be replaced with a raised separated bike path with also with a protected intersection at Foley Street and Grand Union Boulevard, mimicking the bike path design of Assembly Innovation Park. This bike path, as well as proposed sidewalk design, will be further discussed in this presentation. Go to the next slide, please. Finally, this will be my last slide. This slide shows the overall transportation connection points to the site. The red line shows how vehicles can access the site from nearby streets, including Revolution Drive and also the I ninety-three highway via Middlesex Avenue to Foley Street to Grand Union Boulevard. The orange line shows how pedestrians can access the site from the nearby M B T Orange Line Station. As previously mentioned, there are dedicated bike lanes on Foley Street and Grand Union Boulevard, as well as the M B T bus stop on Grand Union Boulevard. These all provide multiple modes of access to the site. Foley Street also connects to the Kensington Underpass west of the site, I'm on the I ninety-three, that provides further access to the surrounding city. And now I'll turn it over to Amy Houghton. Thank you.
Hi, again, I'm Amy Houghton with the Landscape Architect with Wagner Hodgson Landscape Architecture. So here the streetscapes, as you heard in Kristen's and Peter's conversation, each street sort of has a various function. And so really designing the streetscapes were to to accommodate the function of the building as well as tie into the Assembly Row needs and functions as well as accommodate a lot of the city needs as well. So just thinking of that, but these, the streetscapes vary in size based on the functions that they serve. And ultimately, as you can see, each street, each streetscape has sort of similar zones. Just in general, we have a furniture zone around the, at the edge of the building where there's permeable paving. And then we have an accessible walk that surrounds that and about five feet wide. And then we go to these raised planters where you'll see street trees and permeable paver and some up, I mean, not permeable paving, some permeable perennials, sorry. But there's also site furnituring in those zones as well. And I'll just get into more detail for each street. Next slide. So looking at Foley Street, as you can see, we have some images showing the character of what we want to achieve there. But ultimately, starting at the curb, moving inward, there's a buffer zone between that and the bike lane, really fully as Peter mentioned, has the bike way on it. So from the bike way, then it'll be buffered from the accessible walk with a raised planter. And in that zone, we'll have street trees and perennial plantings as well as a bike rack and some surface-mounted benches. So these are just some of those, those images of what the paving might be and such. And then the last zone after the accessible walk would be another furniture zone up against the building where we see having permeable paving as well as some planters and potential benches down the road. Next. Okay, is it? Sorry, this is out of sequence as I know it. Looking at Harold Cohen Way, this is more of the pedestrian spine, as you have heard. So this is a wider condition, as you can see in the section. Again, having that buffer zone right at the street to the, to the planter, raised planter that will have benching in that and street trees as well as that accessible walk, which is ADA compliant, which connects to the main entries and the corners of the streets. Then we also have our, in this, on this street, we have a very wide furniture zone up against the building where we have a variety of raised metal planters that have wood benches sticking off, off them like sort of down below in the imagery, as you can see that. And then ultimately, you know, the street connects from the Innovation Park down to the Mystic River through Assembly Row. So, next slide. And this is an image of that condition with these long linear benches and just the, also the area where the, having planters to separate the interior potential daycare space from the streets. So, next slide. Looking at Auto Workers Way, the function of that is more the service street, as you heard. So this street again has a narrower, because it is a narrower street, it has a narrow raised planter where lighting is included, lighting is included on all the streets in these planter zones. And so again, the accessible walkway and permeable paver up against the building. Then lastly, Grand Union Boulevard, this is the street that supports the bus stop. And so, and the secondary entrance to the building. So in this condition, we have planters up against the building that have benches mounted to the side, similar to what we have at Harold Cohen Way in that furniture zone. And there's also some loose benches and planters in that zone. And that's again permeable paving in this area. Then we have our accessible walk going out towards the street and our raised planter where we have street trees and perennials to help give buffer between the traffic and the pedestrians. And again, that's, that, I guess, step-off curb, as we're calling it, it's a cobblestone step-off curb. Okay. So this is an image of that and how that could look. We're also the idea of having those planters where the benches are I guess, mounted off them. Right at the entrance, we may have sculpture in that planter to signify, just give some attention to that entrance. Next. Then ultimately, looking at the planting design, we wanted to be responsive to the recommendations of the city. All our tree species were selected off the Somerville Street Tree List, as well as the majority of our plantings are native or non-native that are approved in that pollinator plant list. But really, the, the plant design was created in order to provide seasonal interest, native plantings for not only humans but other urban creatures and really provide a beauty to complement our building. So that would be it.
Thanks, Amy. That wraps up our S P S R A presentation. Now I will turn it back over to Matt to bring up one last item before we take questions. Oh, Matt, you're muted.
Someday I'll remember to do that. I think the only thing, the last thing we wanted to to mention was, you know, the staff had issued a report for our initial hearing back a couple of weeks ago. And as we got continued, we took the opportunity to provide some comments on the staff report and staff, we really appreciate it, took the time to review it and issued an updated staff report. So I think, you know, in general, we're, we're in agreement on the conditions that that staff has proposed, but did want to point out three things that are in the report that we'll just have to get fixed as we go along. First, there's a, you know, the summary of the proposal in the staff report refers to the incorrect number of parking spaces and bike spaces. I think that's just a carryover from a prior iteration of the project when we first started. But just making sure that as we go forward, that we catch that and the full proposal gets sent. The second is, is just to clarify that the parking is intended to serve the residents and commercial uses of the property, rather than being an open commercial parking facility. It's a little different than some of the other facilities. And there's some reference to commercial parking that we just wanted to point out. And then finally, the only condition that we had a comment on still was condition twenty-one, which is signage for the bike parking. I think we're fine with working with staff on that, but it refers to compliance with the current zoning. And so we would just ask to take that out. I think staff did that other places, but that's it. We do appreciate the time and we appreciate all the effort that staff put into getting us here, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Team, thank you all very much. Before I kind of continue the discussion, I'm hoping that, Steve, are you the case planner on this or? Or do, do we have somebody who might be able to, oh, Sarah's here. Oh, sweet, Sarah's here. I didn't even see you. I'm so sorry. Sarah, do you, do you mind addressing some of the concerns that Attorney Snell just raised on some of the issues in the, in the updated staff memo on whether we're aligned, whether there's a topic for further discussion?
Absolutely. The, there was, Attorney Snell is correct, there was some conflict in the original documentation regarding the parking numbers. And so that was where that confusion started. So that's a simple edit to the typo. The same with the Condition twenty-one was definitely an oversight. On my part, I thought I had fine-toothed combed it. The same with the reference to the commercial parking, but we can definitely do another check on that and make sure it's correct. As, as the board knows, this is, you know, we're, we're stuck between two ordinances, as you know, has been outlined, and so we evidently, in a sort of, still, despite our best interests, Matt and I coordinate frequently to make sure we're both on the same page.
I think the only item, I think, I think the only item that was raised that wasn't directly addressed is the question about the nature of, of the parking, whether it's going to be in a free, free use or restricted to the building. Is that right? Or is that, or is that the remedy?
No, you're correct. That's, that was the reference to the commercial parking garage, because that would mean it's, it is open to the public. What the, to sort of bridge between what we normally ask in MMPs under the new ordinance and where they are today, so it will be unbundled from the residential leases, but it will not be open to, open to the public.
Okay, so it won't be restrict the X number of spaces not dedicated to this use in the building versus that use in the building? It will be just for the building, however, I, you know, I couldn't pop in and, and pay twenty bucks and say it.
Only on a handful of spaces potentially on the first floor that will serve the retail space.
Okay. Okay, that clarified some of the questions that I had based on the presentation, but is anybody else on the board have any comments or questions that they'd like to raise at this time? See Lynn?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious about the street level permeability of the building and how it interacts with the street. I tried to track like the, and particularly when you went through the materials, I, I couldn't quite tell from your renderings, like I just couldn't quite tell what the permeability was. And what flagged this for me was when you talked about a considerable, you know, a considerable distance on Grand, Grand Avenue as, as going to have a mural. So that's going to be a, that's going to be essentially a non-permeable wall. And I understand that the mural is trying to create this kind of a street level connectivity. I also want to caution you to say, no, well, we're going to put all the pedestrian access on Harold Way, but not so much on the other. It's like, this is Assembly Square, that Grand Avenue, I could envision it in ten, fifteen years as having just as much pedestrian traffic. So I encourage us, I mean, it's going to have the, the width and whatnot, but I still encourage us to not just dismiss it as not having any pedestrian amenities. But could somebody kind of go through the four different sides and be really explicit on this is transparent, this is blocked, this is transparent, this is blocked? Because I'd like to get a better understanding of that before I raise any concerns.
Kristen, you're on mute. Okay, not on mute. Now I'll share again.
Now we need that picture back.
Yeah. There you go. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, this is Grand Union, where we, we do have the, the alcoves. And the thing about this building is, as much as we wanted to get all of the back-of-house services onto Auto Workers Way, this is a FIS building, it's all electric. And so the electrical service is just much bigger than what you're used to seeing with a traditional gas-powered building. There's just a lot. And it, it, you know, we put everything that we put on Auto Workers Way, but there's just not enough frontage. So some of it had to go on another street. And after listening to Sarah Lewis's group, they really preferred it on Grand Union rather, rather than Harold Cohen. And we, we do have things for pedestrians on this street, to your point, it, even though it is maybe primarily vehicle-dominated, there obviously will be pedestrians. So, you know, we do have the trees and planters where we can, we've got benches and planters and this nice long, like signage planter, and then our entry. So this part is opaque. And then we get to our entry, and from here on out, it is transparent. This is retail.
So can you go back?
Yeah.
I understand from signage to the left is all solid.
That's right.
And then from the entrance on the glass right there to the right is all transparent.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Turning the corner on Foley, this is all transparent here. Retail space, hopefully the daycare, and then you get to the open space here at the corner. When you turn the corner, again, you have the open space, then some opaque area before you get to the main entry, which again is transparent. And then you have the transparency here at the amenities going down the rest of the block.
So, but on, on this, it, it's, so you've got the, I'm looking, and you say it's two stories, but the, you've got windows on one level and it looks like, what's right above the windows, that's, yeah, right, right there, is that?
Yes, so that's the, the parking beyond.
Okay, so the first story is transparent, and then you have this, okay, and then it goes in, it goes into the green.
Yeah.
And then, and then auto way?
Right. So then this is really the back-of-house, which has the same functions as the building across the street. So the entries to the parking, trash and recycling, and to the loading docks.
And then the murals will be on Grand Union?
That's right. Yeah. So that's here on the transformer alcove doors, and then we're also continuing it around the building. It kind of mimics this glass that turns the corner.
I mean, this building, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm still trying to sort out my question, but, but Assembly Square is going to be a pedestrian mixed-use vibrant, you know, neighborhood. So I think paying attention, and it, and unlike the lab buildings that were on the edge, this is going to be right, right in the middle. So I think being, paying attention to the pedestrian experience, the permeability is, is essential. We don't want to have a, a, a dead space. So I'm still, now I understand. I'm going to chair through you, ponder a little bit my, my next question, but I didn't quite understand that until just now. So now I'm pondering my next question.
Lynn, that is, that is, that is okay. We have plenty of time. I do want to make sure that we get public testimony in. And I, I have no intention of voting on this agenda item tonight, so any, any questions that we have, because I'm sure I will, you know, have some thoughts as, as they'll evolve over the next couple of weeks. We can always bring it up when our meeting on the first, because I don't know how many substantive agenda items outside of this and the recommendations based on joint hearing tonight, we might have on that agenda item, on that agenda for the, for the first. So we have plenty of time. And if we don't get it done on the first, we can always figure out some more time. We've got all the time.
Mr. Chair, I might suggest, it, it might be helpful in light of kind of that conversation we just had. Kristen, if we go back to kind of the first floor plan and, and how you were talking about the passive house and just showing what's there and why it's there. Because that kind of helps understanding what, what the question is about what's outside, but understanding what's, what's inside the building that needs to be there to, to
I will.
passive house.
I, I, I will ask if this can be done somewhat quickly, because there are people in the audience that do deserve to have the testimony taken earlier, rather than, than later, as we're getting
Okay.
up on eight thirty at night.
Alrighty.
Well, yeah, absolutely. So, so back here, we have our loading dock. We have our trash entry. We have the entry to the parking. This is a generator fuel room, egress stair, couple parking spots. Then we've got our electrical room, and then we've got our transformer alcove. So there was a lot to fit in.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else on the board have any comments or questions of staff or the applicant at this time? Seeing none. What I'd like to do now is open it up to public testimony. For anybody in the audience that wants to speak in support of the application, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. And I'm not going to put a timer up, but I'd ask you to state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments respectful of, of the time and other people's time. Anybody that wants to speak in support going once? Going twice? Seeing none, I, I I see Tori at the buzzer. So we can get Tori into.
Hi, my name is Tori Antonino, sixty-five Boston Street. I think I'm speaking in favor, but I, I do have, I have concerns and I, I guess, in this case, we're sort of like straddling, I, I, my impression is we're straddling between two zonings. For example, I'm hoping that the parking is underground, but I don't, I, I don't know. And and I do support the reduction of the parking spaces to a hundred forty-nine, two hundred forty-nine. I, I don't know if I support a waiver to, to submit another transit plan, because we are evolving so quickly with transit, and maybe there's even fewer parking spaces that we, that could be required. I am I'm sort of really cringing at this synthetic turf play space. Is, is that, is that necessary? Mayor Wu did pass that there be no more synthetic turf in Boston, and I'm hoping that Ketchikan Valentine will follow suit, have something by the summer, and maybe these planner, these landscape architects can, can try to be on the forefront of it. Again, it's hot, it's plastic, it's, it has the PFAS in it, it's forever chemicals, it is not healthy. I will encourage alternative lawns in Pathrush as a substitute that is not being tried yet, and I think it could be actually effective. And would it be okay? I know, but I can't ask questions, but I'd love to see the landscape plans again. Again, I, I know, I, I believe we're straddling two zonings, but we do have a native plant ordinance that requires minimum of fifty percent in public spaces of native plantings. And unless I'm looking at the wrong document, what I see are barely fifty percent in mass of, of native plantings and also invasive plantings. And why are we not planting just native deciduous trees on the sidewalks? We can do that. Swamp white oak is working. Silver maple is something we should be trying. No need to put in a non-native plantis when we have our, our native plains, plane trees, Occidentalis, sycamore occidentalis. I guess you went through PSEF, but I don't know if it's recent, since, since the summer, we did pass the Somerville Pollinator Action Plan, which is a guiding document, just like any other. And I, I would ask the landscape planners to look at it again, because these, there are a lot of plants here that are not at all approved as, you know, acceptable pollinator plant, acceptable herbaceous plants. I don't know if, just maybe a conversation, if this, I would ask the, these applicants to come before the Urban Forestry Committee if, if it were timely, because I think we could really turn up the native plant requirements. There's no need for hosta, no need for day lilies. We have native juniper, we have native yew. I just want to wave a wand and let's, can we get to seventy-five percent in making all the trees native plants? I think that's my, just the importance of native plants is for our pollinators and evolutionary symbiotic relationships that non-native plants just don't provide, and we are in a pollinator crisis, and it is Somerville policy that we plant native plants, so. That, that would be my one request. And in general, I speak in favor of this development. Oh, there, there it is. So again, the juniper, the yew. Why are we putting native honeysuckle in? We have some great vines. I see the, the northern bush honeysuckle, you know, purple love grass can just, our grasses can all be switched over. And my last comment, I do want to be respectful, is part of the reason, this is going to be a high-traffic area. So we want people to see our native plants and look at them and be like, oh, my gosh, like, I see you have butterfly weed, you know, mountain mint. Why, like, I want the wow factor to be our native plants, and if we don't get them abundantly in the landscape, we're not going to be able to have that spark and joy. People will just start to see hosta and day lilies and think, oh, yeah, that's what I plant. No, we, we need to change our plant palette. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Tori. If anybody else that wants to speak in support of the application, please raise your hand. Going once. Going twice, I close that portion of the hearing and open up to anybody that wants to testify in opposition to the application or otherwise express concern. Please raise your hand. Once. Twice. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and bring it back to discussion by members of the planning board. I am actually going to follow up with with you all on a, a concern that Tori raised, and I'm wondering if you could explain to me if you are in fact planning on putting AstroTurf on, on the property. Is that, is that happening? Are we? Are we in, are we in Papua one? Am I going to get turf burn?
So that is specific to the courtyard that you see here on Level One, because the intention is to secure a daycare operator, and that would be the play yard required by the operator.
Are there not alternatives that can be done outside of, I'm sorry, just like outside of AstroTurf, like, maybe I know there are little plastic mats, and there might be something that might be a little bit more, you know, environmentally Maybe I know there are little plastic mats, and there might be something that might be a little bit more, you know, environmentally friendly and and nice-looking and not. You're not not turf. I I I don't know what I'm looking for, but you know, the concept of putting AstroTurf. On on a property, even if it's being used by a daycare, it just seems to be a little bit um. In at least by estimation, a little bit uh less than ideal.
Yeah, and and we can give you more information on the exact product that uh daycares like to use. I think we're also open to talking with daycares, it you know, if if they are open to, you know, non-synthetic. Surfaces, we'd love to do that.
Yeah, I. I would encourage you to do that and come back with some ideas, because I. It just unless there's a particular reason to do that, um it just seems to be a little bit. Behind where I think we're trying to go as. As a city with the with the with the materials and the plantings and the and the and the ground covers that we that we're using. Um. So I I'm glad that Tori raised that, because that's it. I can't say it other than it just doesn't seem to sit right with the way that I would envision um application like this that otherwise. You know, generally supportive of um, it just they're just kind of. Sticks in me kind of in a in a weird way, and if there's a way to explain it, if there's a way to. Uh, you know, get city staff to explain this is appropriate, and this is why. Um, we can, we can get there, but if there's a way to modify this to make this a little bit um. You know, less synthetic and 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 more green and and more native. Um, you know, more environmentally friendly, that would be obviously fantastic.
Just to.
Absolutely.
This area is covered too, so having any kind of um natural material. Well, plantings would be difficult to maintain or um but totally understand your concerns.
Thank you. Who else? I I need to move my slider here, so I can actually see all of you. Uh, you know, they're still small squares. Anybody else have any comments or questions they'd like to raise? I see Michael saying, you know what? You know what, Michael? You gave me a great idea, because I can. You know, very seldom see uh, you know, people kind of waving from the background when they're, you know. Brady Bunch on the screen here. Um, I kind of like the idea of having the actual raised hand function for uh. For all of you, so I can actually identify who wants to talk to them, not just kind of scanning uh the environment here.
Sure, I appreciate appreciate you giving me the kudos, but that was definitely a a trick I learned from member Richard, so she she really gets the credit for that one.
Okay.
Um, I would start by saying, just, you know, as a as another member, I also am interested in uh resolution of the the AstroTurf issue. I'm sure if the mayor of Boston is uh requiring a change, that, you know, there's got to be a solution there, so. Um, just want to kind of put my hat as as also interested in that. Um, the real reason I raised my hand, though, was to uh kind of first. Um, reference back to your utility plan, so I know this isn't exactly the most exciting uh part of the discussion. Uh, but the impact of projects of this scale on the surrounding community, I think, is extremely important, especially as. The greater Assembly Square area is starting to fill up. I could see us now quickly leading ourselves towards, you know. Maybe maxing out this the system that's kind of been put in place. So I spent almost, you know, seventy-five percent of my time prepping for this application, just focused on the utility plan here and. First and foremost, I thought it was actually very thorough, and I thought that it had a lot of very positive things to say. Um, and so first, I'd like to just open up the floor to spend five minutes from the group, maybe just. Maybe not even five minutes, you're only sixty seconds, talking a little bit about um. You know, your consideration of specifically stormwater. Um, I want. To emphasize that this area is kind of prone to to flooding and also emphasize that. You know, folks who sign up for alerts in Somerville frequently get, you know, alerts saying that there's been stormwater discharge into the Mystic River. Which is right by Assembly Square, and so the more that new applications like this can find ways to prevent. Stormwater runoff, whether it be temporary uh catch basins or strategic um use of those raised plantings. To almost kind of be submerged plantings to have some extra uh capture of water and stuff like that. I would love to hear any thoughts your team has had as you've kind of considered the design here. And if helpful, uh I'm happy to to, you know, hear more thoughts on this at the next meeting, uh but if you have thoughts to share with us tonight, that would be great, too.
Hello, thank you, Michael. Um, yeah, I so so like I said, I'm I'm a small engineer. Uh, my manager Dale Horstman's also. Uh, here too. Um, I think it might make sense to promote him as well, uh to help explain and help answer. Uh, this Michael, um but to begin with, um we are looking at uh providing. Further stormwater improvements than what is typical uh Assembly Row. Um, previously, when Assembly Row was originally developed and permitted underneath the the PUD and the amended beauty. When the the new outfall was built to the Mystic, um for the that new seventy-two-inch outfall that was built. About ten years or so ago, um there were certain priorities back then that are. Um, and didn't exactly address some of the current priorities, like such as phosphorus and stuff that have um that no Somerville has requirements for now. Uh, so our project is going to be addressing some of those new nutrient removals. Uh, we are proposing a sand filter to collect and treat. Um, and help detain the stormwater uh generated by the roof. Um, that's going to be located within the garage. And will discharge out to the existing drainage infrastructure in Grand Union. Um, we are also keen at um. Different ways to treat phosphorus within the sidewalk, and we're leaning towards permeable pavers, but we're also looking at. Um. The possibility of bio-retention basins or even using um alternative structures. I within the sidewalk, um due to the nature of some of the different city requirements. Like having cement sidewalks uh for accessibility routes. Um. Uh, we are limited in like where we can locate some of these permeable pavers. Uh, but we are actively uh designing that, and we plan to. Show that uh full design within our our future streetscape construction permit. Uh, we'll be reviewing and and actively coordinating with the engineering department as well. Um. So we we are aware that um there is flooding concerns, um you know, this by the nature of where. The roads were built, we are tied um to the existing elevations. We can't raise the site up. More than we can, uh but we are grading the site to be above the existing elevation. Particularly where the existing parking lot is, um so we are providing. Uh, some relief that way. Um, also, everything from. All the important electro equipment, uh with the transformers are going to be located above the designed flood elevation for future storm events. Um, so we are, we are, we always have those kind of environmental and stormwater concerns in our minds. As we're as we're designing this project.
Thanks, Peter. Is it possible to promote Dale Horstman as a presenter?
Steve Carey, sure, I can do that. Don't see Dale as one of the panelists right now. Um, oh, no, I do, sorry.
I see Mister Horstman.
Yep, I'll promote him to, uh, yeah, I'll promote him to panelist, um and then I should be able to give him the. Let's see here, uh Mister Horstman, if you could just request to share screen, you sh- I should be able to give you.
I think he just needs to speak.
Yes, I can speak, and and Peter did a good job uh about describing it. Um. But, you know, we did evaluate this building for resiliency, and we did work with the city staff to raise this um. Uh, as much as 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 practical and over over the um the critical design, you know, uh future flood elevations. Um, in in their in their um their flooding model. Um. So so and and at the same time, we 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 needed to meet the um existing street um elevation, so. We raised this much up as much as practical. On the stormwater side, uh like Peter said, we did put in a um. New outfall, uh Federal Realty did that as part of the mitigation of the of the larger PUD. Uh, which effectively separated the combined sewer um. Problems of the area um by by creating that outfall. It 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 took the sewer and the. And the stormwater out of out of the same, out of the same um pipeline and 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 it was just charging it separately. Downstream into the tidal portion of the Mystic River. Um. So you won't have that the that overflow problem um coming from any any of the the federal reality. Um, properties that within this PUD. Um, and then, as Peter said, we did um. We are are following all the city regulations, the new, as of adopted in um twenty twenty-three. For all the new uh stormwater uh water quality um. Metrics. But happy to answer or follow up with anything else that you had.
No, that was that was very helpful. Thank you for that.
Who else?
Mister Chair, you might not see this, but Lynn has her hand up.
I see that, and I'm beating Lynn on on.
Okay.
Give me the little yellow hand thing.
Oh, you want the yellow hand, okay.
I want the yellow hand. That's the new rule. Gotcha.
I actually want to follow up with what M- Michael said, because he raised a really important point here. Um, about functional landscaping, that within with the amount of landscaping that you have around, you have the. Um, I mean, it's one thing to put in an outfall to separate the combined sewer, but putting in functional landscaping. You can attenuate the flow, thereby mitigating even further the amount of runoff going into into the Mystic. And so um particularly, so you you wouldn't be attenuating um from around. It would be coming from from the roof, um because that that that's the new impervious surface, or that's the impervious cover that you're. Um, you're generating. At the same time, I want to note that you are building on existing impervious cover, so you're not creating any new. So what we're asking for is kind of above and beyond, but to look at how you might um create some of the. Uh, some of this landscaping into functional landscaping to attenuate the flow. And um, there's a lot of information on how to do that, so I.
Yep.
That 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 might be, that might be a an improvement, and and also. I I'm still really stuck. I completely understand on um why there are some solid walls. But uh, you know, in addition to a mural, putting in some functional landscaping on those areas too. Might also mitigate the the kind of the 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 solid walls that you have um on. I'm terrible with street names. On Grand Union Boulevard, that's hiding that um electrical. Whatever it's called. Um, it was electrical something, like.
Transforms.
Electrical something. Um, and you had a sist- the it was of the electrical something, something, and then it was like three or four different parking spaces. But so it generates quite a bit of essentially a blank wall, but again, thinking about functional landscaping. In addition to the mural, now really kind of creates that dynastism that you want to have at the street level. So you're you're killing two birds with one stone, thinking about how we can like really capture the water coming from the. Storm from the roof.
Right, and we, uh can you see the plan that's up right now, Lynn?
You know, I I don't have a big screen, and that's very small writing, but y- yes, I can see it.
Okay, so um, well, actually, first, can I can I just ask you to define what you mean by functional landscaping?
Sure, well, so by by way of background, I'm actually a water quality expert and have written the federal regulations on um stormwater. That um EPA Region One adopted, so when I mean, just just by way of context, so when I mean functional landscaping. I mean, green infrastructure or low-impact development, which are, you know, whatever, so. Um, like trigger words, and that's why I moved to functional landscaping, so. Michael talked about moving from raised beds down to beds that can be uh ground level. It's like you could do that, you could keep the raised beds, and that's why I went to functional landscaping, because if you did green infrastructure. Or or street level, I call it street level um landscaping, right? You're you're really uh again, absorbing um or attenuating the flow. You're not. Getting rid of it, or the trees will get rid of some of it, but you're attenuating the flow, which is really in the Mystic River, what you're trying to. What you're trying to get to, so that's what I mean by functional landscaping, so. It's not a big change, it's really kind of changing that you want to put in water-loving plants in addition to the native plants. That um the prior speaker, Tara, spoke about um a- as well as perhaps augmenting the soil, so it's more.
I I can speak a little bit to our some of our constraints on site, so. And and this goes for all of the PUD as well. Um, we have very, very poor soil here. It is his his like a layer, a a large layer of peat. It was old tideland at one point in time. So we don't have, we have, you know, we don't have very good infiltration rates at all. We would love to infiltrate. Um, because it makes it easier for us to more design, and that's why we're proposing the stormwater filter. Uh, because, you know, you do achieve better, you know, removal rates from infiltration. Um, but, you know, as um, you know, the. Some of some of it's outside this area, but some some of the area is former. Yeah, um former brownfield sites, um and and um as well as the uh the lack of infiltration. We have always uh had a basis of design out here to to limit um caught, you know, um. I guess convergent flow into specific areas for infiltration, one, because we can't get the infiltration rates to work. And two, because we didn't want to mitigate uh any pu- um potential contaminants further into the groundwater. But we are, we are proposing, um, you know, these planters and and potentially permeable pavers. Around site to to have, you know, um. To have some infiltration in those areas and some recharge. Um, but we're hesitant to send large volumes like like off the roof. And and some of the other larger imperv- uh impervious surfaces to to point discharge infiltration systems.
Right, and and it looks to me like all of this gray hatched area, these are permeable pavers, is that correct?
We were evaluating a couple different um solutions to um. To deal with the, I I guess it's the onsite portion rather than the building portion. And one of them was permeable pavers, the other we were looking at was was some some um. Some rain garden.
Rain garden.
Retention uh and and the um and we were working back and forth with the staff on the on those issues. And we know we do have a a site construction permit that deals with the stormwater and 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 um. The stormwater requirements for these types of developments, uh which we'll be working through with the city as well.
Stormwater requirements during construction are different from post-construction, so we're primarily focused on this conversation on post-construction.
Right.
Yes, the the engineering department has the, they have multiple different permits underneath the the envelope of the site construction permit. Um, so it involves the the post-construction efforts as well. Um, so that's why we're looking at having a a sand filter. To get the necessary um phosphorus removal as required by the city. Um, in conjunction with permeable pavers and and the possibility of of bio-retention basins or rain gardens. Uh, servicing the rest of the sidewalks.
This seemingly is both real and Simpsons.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I have a quick question for Director Lewis, um. And but before returning to.
But before returning to conversation with the applicant, if um Sarah's still available.
I am right here.
Thank you so much, um just just as a refresher, because we're now several years out from the. Previous zoning ordinance under which this originated, um my understanding is that what we're here tonight about is a site plan approval with special permit. Which it remains sort of in the realm of discretionary permits that the planning board may grant, and that we're looking at a number of waivers, so there. Are sort of a few levels of discretionary planning board approval that is being sought, this is more than a straightforward site plan approval. To confirm compliance with the PUD, is that correct, or do you have any corrections to that?
No, that is correct, and and if I may through the chair, give you a little bit of background, so the old process. The planned unit development, the PUD, was the first step in the process. At that point in time, that didn't give any entitlements, it sort of. Did document what the intent was and what the maximum growth was, and so then each project that would come in for what was called the. This special permit was site plan review. And Assembly always had the dash A because it was P U D A. Um, the, that was where the entitlements came in. So where we're struggling to cross over to your point is. We have to do sort of this special permit and the site plan approval altogether. To approximate what was the SPSR. Um, now, the whereas other projects might be able to request. Waivers that would need separate special permits under the PUD. Basically, there's a whole set of waivers that just can be requested as part of their special permit. Um, but to your point, yes, it is a discretionary process.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Please feel free to correct me if what I say next is misrepresenting what you just summarized. I I'm so sorry to be this blunt to the applicant team, but I just want, I feel like I've been watching this conversation play out and and. Members McNeely and and. Richards are just a little bit newer to the board, and I I just want to say. I'm hearing loud and clear from the board that there is a desire to see the landscaping here reflect sort of a more active management of water on the site. As a developer, I completely understand that this is a finished landscape plan that you guys want to proceed with, and that taking it back apart to look for something more creative. Is not what you want to be hearing and not something that you want to do, but. I'm seeing that we have sort of a discretionary approval that's in front of us that includes a number of different waivers. And it's a thoughtful plan, and everyone is in support of, I think, the the main thrust of the project. So while if there's more productive conversation that we can have on this discussion tonight, I'm happy for the group to continue with it, but I I feel like what I'm hearing is a request. To come back in two weeks with a little bit more creative thinking about whether there's any enhancements that can be done. To remember Richards and McNeely's sort of discussion points on optimizing the groundwater issues on the site. Is that? Is is that right, Lynn and Michael, or is that is that a reasonable sort of thing to be looking for at this point, because I hear you guys asking. Could we, could we, could we, and I think that. We like, we we all need some space to go back and think about this, and maybe the design team needs to have a little bit of time to also think about it.
Yeah, my concerns, I that Amelia, that was an amazing summary, thank you very much. My concerns around was the the public realm and, you know, these these blank walls, which I I understand why they're there. But nonetheless, this is a building that's going to be in the middle of Assembly Square, so. Um, looking at, you know, a way around to mitigate that pedestrian experience, the the mural is one thing, but adding. Additional landscaping that will not only help the pedestrian experience, but also help with stormwater. Issues in the area felt like a win-win to me.
And I'm just hearing from my fellow board members what sounds like requests for very reasonable measures that I feel like fall squarely under the category of mitigation. Of the impacts of this project, and so I'm I'm just asking the applicant team to consider whether they. Could take a closer look at the questions that have been raised and and be prepared to come back to that, even though I know this is far along, and that's not sort of where you were hoping to be.
Understood.
Uh, I'm going to second Amelia's comments here and. Um, hopefully channel the concerns that she identified with with both Lynn and Michael's comments. It's clear that they want you to do a thing. By 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 a date certain, which is usually, you know, two weeks from now, if you need more, you can always get more time, um I'm just going to straight up ask you. Uh, please come back and do the thing, please, please identify their concerns, come back with a plan that addresses their concerns. Because I don't want you to get to a place where you're going to have potentially two no votes. Um, on 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 a project that could be easily remedied by a a reimagining of the concern that they have. I might be a little bit more forceful than they are, and that's okay.
Can I speak to one minute to that? Um, I I do, I do um want to just highlight that we do have certain restrictions here with that. With with not being able to infiltrate, that really kind of backs us into a corner of what, you know, LID treatment and BMPs that we can use. Um, and with limited area um to do so, um given, you know, given the um. The surrounding surrounding areas, so um. That is a real constraint that we have in designing, um especially when it comes to 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 those LID um. BMPs, and that that's one of the reasons why we are proposing that sand filter to to really. Um, for for water quality and in in some um attenuation. Uh, within, you know, to treat that that roof runoff, and that leaves us really with just the the sidewalk. Um, portions that we were treating, um and that is being proposed to have some infiltration on it. And or or like I said, some LID treatment in in those those rain gardens. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are clear of the 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 restrictions there that we do have because of the. The conditions of the 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 subsurface.
Yeah, and so I appreciate that, and I will um, I'll just paraphrase paraphrase Nick Cage in in The Rock. Uh, give us your best.
Okay.
Who else? As we near the nine o'clock hour. See, no further discussion by members of planning board at this time. Uh, and you'll thank the applicant for a wonderful presentation, um there are certainly some areas. Um, where we will have some further discussion in a couple of weeks. So with that in mind, what I'd like to do now is continue this application to the May first meeting. Um, of course, if the applicant thinks that they need more time, they are, you know, more than free to ask for it. Um, but that motion to continue now seconded by Amelia, Steve, I'm going to ask you to call the roll.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Hi. Thank you all very much, I'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, also for the purpose of that hearing, we're going to keep the written comment open until the twenty-fifth at nine AM. Um, planning board at SomervilleNA.gov. There is no other uh business before the planning board tonight, is that right, Steve?
We do technically have the um Assembly Square uh neighborhood plan on the agenda, but I don't think we're anticipating any staff presentation.
I thought that was a May agenda item.
It it is technically on the agenda now, but we are, we are not um anticipating any staff presentation on it until till the May meeting.
Sorry, Sarah. Uh, okay, with no further business before the planning board tonight, the chain moves to adjourn at nine oh one. Seconded by Amelia. Roll call, please.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Thank you, I'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you.